Go ahead and open with your pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll have a moment of silence. Thank you. We'll call.
Mr. Pittman?
Here.
Mr. Sholli, Mr. Campbell here, Mr. Jones, Mr. Hump here.
And we're gonna skip D, John, correct?
Yes.
And go right on to public session?
Well, we're going to rate G.
U, C, D, E, F, G minutes, review and approval of January 6th, 2018 organizational meeting minutes in the January 6th, 2018 regular meeting minutes of the Board of Education. Yeah, I am trying to rush today.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hump, second by Mr. Campbell, Pittman?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Hump?
Yes.
Presentation and recognition, Mrs. Fisk.
Um, we have just the two A and B here tonight. I think C is gonna come next time with Mr. Sholli here, because he kinda adds to that, actually.
What does that look?
Sounds good.
Uh, Mrs. Fisk, you wanna kinda give us an update at the elementary building?
Uh, just a couple of recent events. We had, we celebrated World Read-Allow Day on February 1st. It was information that we received an email on that all across the world. People were celebrating by doing read-alouts on a particular date. We had a couple of guest readers. I read, Mr. Baker read. We had Billy Bersick, who's the, he has been consultant, has been giving us a lot of media lately, came on, read. So during the K1 and 2 lunch and recess times, we did a small read-alow to our classes, and then over the announcements, we read to the entire school. We recently had a 5th and 6th grade interactive band concert, or band practice. It was the second year for that. Very well attended. It's really, and I love the parents, I love, but those that have a parent and a child in 5th and then the child in 6th, because it'd be very safe for both to hear the change, the progression that kids make from 5th to 6th, from Hot Cross Buns to the others. It's quite, to hear Hot Cross Buns, we all love, right? Recorder days. But they did a fantastic job. Couple upcoming events. We have our Jump Room for Heart kickoff will be on March 2nd. So we'll be having the assembly to kick that off, and then you'll see information coming home with the children for sponsorships. Our kindergarten registration, we have a busy March 7th, 8th, and 9th. Our good days to be in our area. We have kindergarten registration the 7th day to 9th. Our literacy night for K3 is March 7th. Our Camp Fitch for 5th grade is March 7th through 9th. We have our book fair going on at that time. So it's a lot of things jam-packed into those three days in the building. Our PTA meeting this past week, one of the major things discussed, and I was hoping Bill was gonna be here, because it's kinda his thing that he initiated. Over spring break, our custodial staff will be doing new door handles. PTA has purchased our current door handles. When you use your key to get in, you have to like turn it left, turn it right, and it's like, it's very, every time you put it in, you're struggling. Did I lock it? Did I leave it unlocked? So it was one of the things they looked at, and now it's more, the way he had explained it was, it's more like a hotel door. Like when you put it, once it's locked, it's locked, but you can unlock it from the inside as well. But just for, for quickness also, that, you know, if your door's not locked, you can quickly lock it, but you can also get in quickly and more efficiently, know that your door's locked behind you. So those will be, they can retrofit like 10 of the doors, and just 18 will be completely new door handles. So that'll be happening over spring break.
That's great. I thought it was wonderful. I did go to band night, and I was surprised at how many students there were. I'm wondering how we can keep them. How can we keep them? Because there probably is not very many 6th graders or 5th graders that are currently not participating in band. So what's the drop-off?
I, I don't know that answer.
Yeah, I don't either, and I wish that there was a way that we could figure that out.
Ask the kids.
Yeah, because they have made significant changes, but then I spoke about it before, that when we get to high school and junior high, they just, you know, it'll take hours.
They get involved in other things, and, I mean, because it's not even a personnel thing, because 5th grade is Miss Presutti, 5th and 6th is a tag team of Mr. Fiddel and Miss Presutti. So it's not even like you could completely say a change of instructor or something. I don't know. And there's other things happening at those same times, but they do more of a rotation.
The 7th grade level, the drop-off isn't as bad. But when you begin giving them some choices, sometimes isn't the most popular thing to do. Sometimes it becomes a pure...
Am I right that in 5th and 6th grade, it's almost kind of incentivized because it's filling a free time, as they otherwise wouldn't have anything to do? But in junior high, it's taking the place of other curriculum? Like they have an option for a study hall or elective?
At the 8th grade level.
Okay.
The 8th, yes. So it could be options, more options.
But they have a study hall.
In 6th grade, they really don't have an option.
They have a study hall.
They are optioned at downtime. So it's almost incentivized there, which is not a bad thing. But when they get older, it's not incentivized by that, and it's in competition with other curriculum, right?
Especially at the high school.
Yeah, definitely comes down to that.
Because they really do a nice job. I would love to see them stay. Thank you, Mrs. Fisk.
Mr. Beattie?
Okay, I have a couple of things. There's a lot going on in our building also. Obviously, with testing coming up, that's one of the big things that we're preparing for. Our juniors for the last five weeks have been taking ACT prep classes every Wednesday. Those just ended yesterday due to the snow day, so we had to reschedule one. Mr. Chikio comes in and actually sits and works with our juniors for about two and a half hours on just strategies, and I'm hoping that we can continue to do that. It is a little bit of a cost, but we did see a lot of benefit in it last year with some of the kids. Well, I can't say all the kids benefited from it, but there were some that did benefit from it, and we'll see what happens this year. You know, it's kind of a year-to-year deal. And again, the state of Ohio does require us to give our juniors the ACT test, and they are paying for it this year. As long as the state of Ohio, they never know when they're gonna change that, but hopefully they'll continue to pay for it if they're requiring it. So at this point, that's what we're leaving up to. That will be on February 27th, too, to take that test. And then obviously, we have the state testing that's coming up, and Mr. Baker has the dates on those. Obviously, that's something, so the staff is working very hard towards. I do have two other things that I just wanted to bring up or mention to you guys. We had two of our teachers that worked together last week on a lesson that they thought, they had a lot in common. Mr. Mandalora and Mrs. Willock actually worked together on a lesson that dealt with the Italian Renaissance, and Mr. Mandalora taught the art aspect of it, and Mrs. Willock taught the history aspect of it, actually switching classrooms in order to do that. They did a few things, and this is from Mr. Mandalora. They taught about Leonardo da Vinci, Michelangelo, inventions of the Renaissance, Sistine Chapel, by interacting through a virtual tour, allowing the students to explore all the amazing murals and the process in which Michelangelo used to paint the ceiling by laying on his back. They had the kids actually tape something under the desk, and they were drawing a picture. It's kinda funny, because today I went to the printer, and there was a picture of these three girls on their backs under a table, and I didn't know what it was. Who's printing this? And then I got this, that actually described what it was. So at this point, the 7th graders are also going to create their own Leonardo da Vinci sketchbook by using their STEM skills to create an invention like da Vinci. So this is something, hopefully, that will continue in the future, and something that our staff really enjoys. We've done some things in the past with the elementary school. I know Ms. Barnes has gone down to the elementary school. So anytime we can get the staff to work together, that's definitely better. The second thing that I have, let me just give you guys a copy. Mrs. Willock also attended a training this week that hopefully next year, we will be able to implement for our entire staff. And the training itself was fully paid for, and it was sponsored by Jostens. And I'm just gonna read what Mrs. Willock sent me. It says she had the opportunity to attend a professional development on character and leadership that was provided by the Congressional Medal of Honor Foundation. It was held at Kent State. During the professional development, the presenters were current classroom teachers who actually used the resource in their classrooms. The lessons they worked on throughout the day dealt with core values of service, courage, integrity, sacrifice, commitment, citizenship, and patriotism. It was about teaching children life lessons that need to be on the classroom. In addition to working through the lessons, they had the honor to meet and listen to a Medal of Honor recipient, Doc Fowler, from the Vietnam War. She says it was amazing to hear his story and how the teachers used this and the collaboration that went along with it. And as you see there, they are offering this to us as a free training session, and it is something we are going to look into for next year. But I thought it was a great opportunity for one of our teachers just to get some lessons that dealt with some things beyond what you typically see in a textbook with some of that information. I am going to, with your permission, I'm going to send you guys a couple of things in your emails. I will send you some pictures that Mr. Mandalora provided me of the students working on the Renaissance, and then I'm gonna provide you a video that goes along with this, so that you guys can just see a little bit as to what it's all about. I didn't want to do it in advance, because you wouldn't have had any idea why I was sending you that stuff, so.
Is this similar to something that may have been done like at the elementary, where you do like a character trait of the month? Is it something along those lines?
I don't 100% know, because I really haven't had a chance to sit down with Mrs. Willock yet and discuss it. But I'm guessing that most of the lessons probably dealt with something in that realm, so. They actually even paid for the sub for her to go.
Officer Zabowski's is here, so I don't know if you wanted to chime in. Mrs. Fisk was talking about the doormobs, you know, the handle goal that they're gonna do, or the handles, yeah, over spring break, so you kinda wanna touch base real quick on that?
Yeah, absolutely. We, the past four years that I've been here, the door handles have been kind of an issue with our teaching staff. The handles that are over there now, you have to put the key in, unlock them, open the door, take the key out, put the key back in, re-lock the door, walk in, shut the door, and remove the key. So they're very, very problematic with the teachers remembering to keep them locked throughout the school day. Statistics have showed that no active school shooter has ever penetrated a door. So a locked door is the best defense that we have for any type of active school shooter. The teachers brought this to my attention. I brought it to Mrs. Fisk's attention, and we thought it would be a great project for our PTA. We presented it to the PTA, and they loved it. And we were able to get what they call an apartment door. So if anybody ever had an apartment...
I said hotel, sorry.
Hotel, oh, same thing. Hotel, apartment. If you ever had an apartment, remember back in the day, you used to just stick the key in, and you would turn the key, and you'd walk right in, okay? All meanwhile, when you remove the key, the door stays locked. So you pull the key out, the door would shut behind you, the door would remain locked. So there's no more feeling around with the key, having to turn it two, three, sometimes four times, and it also takes away that memory factor. The door's already locked, so we don't have to worry about it.
But the other memory factor is to take the key with you.
I was gonna say, don't. Just take the key with you. So we ended up getting a very good quote from A&amp;M Door, from Bart McGee, who was able to work with the school and our PTA substantially, I must say. I mean, he came down a lot on price, so if you guys see Bart out and around, please thank him. We got the quote, and the PTA last night, Kim, approved it Tuesday, and so we'll be getting those installed in the springtime. Yeah.
That's great.
Anything else?
Yeah, actually, I do.
Do I have to get my notebook?
No. So we'll just skip to my part, is that all right?
That sounds great.
So I am gonna go down to the next page, and I will bring up T. How about I'll bring up Men of Honor while you're here?
Oh, sure. The Men of Honor program finally kicked off for the first year, and I'll tell you what, we've really had a lot of compliments. I know a few of us in this room got emails, phone calls, about the positive results that they're seeing in the nine kids that are participating in the Men of Honor program. And I just received another one yesterday from one student's mom in particular, just raving about his attitude at home, and schoolwork's coming around, but his attitude has improved significantly. We just recently took, well, with Mr. Beattie's idea, actually. One of our lessons was about image, and the image a man should portray in today's society. Kind of a, you know, you look good, feel good type of mantra. And we, I was able to, with Dave's permission, go out to New Style Salon and spoke to Shawna Graham, and we made a field trip out of it, and we took the boys up there, and she donated haircuts to our boys to help with our cause about that image and the image a man should portray. So that was very successful, and, you know, we did a little PR write-up on it. I don't know if you have it with you? I can go get it if you'd like to see it.
I don't bring it.
Thank you for bringing it back, that's not a problem. But it's a 10-week program, and we're on week 5 right now, so next week, we meet every Tuesday for approximately 45 minutes or so, and, you know, we talk about loyalty, honesty, integrity, all-around leadership skills that men should have in today's society, all the way down to how a man should treat a woman, how a man should portray himself through law enforcement, through the eyes of law enforcement, how they should react with law enforcement, how they should react with teachers, people of authority figures. And not only are we teaching them these boys, these lessons, but they're expected, and they were picked due to their, how should I say this, how well they're going to teach their peers. So not only are we just teaching them, but they're expected to go out inside the Jackson Milton community and teach other boys these lessons, and kind of raise the community awareness about it. And so far, so good. I've had nothing but positive, positive reports.
I gotta say, the kids just loved it, too. They were so polite there, and we actually took them down. I took some in my car, and Bill and Dave took some down.
They didn't, definitely, some of them changed their hairstyle drastically.
Some, not seeing some eyes before we went, but pretty short hair. It was fun.
The looks on their faces, especially one boy in particular, I mean, it just, it literally made his day, made his week. You just saw a complete change, and you would never think that a haircut would do that, but it does. It does. It changes those boys' just the way they think about themselves, how they hold themselves, how they carry themselves throughout the school, and you know what? It really shows. I even had teachers email me about it. I mean, it's, it was crazy how positive a result that that caused, so.
That's good. She had four people there coming here. We were in and out, but it was nice that they donated their time to the kids. Thanks for setting that up.
Not a problem.
Nice.
I will go back to A. Policies, you have quite a bit in your book to look over. We're not going to do any of them tonight, so you have them to look over for next month. And some of them, I think there's only a couple that will make, like you picked some of the choices from, I think it goes from there, but most of them are, most of them are mandatory, actually, so. Reading Grant, Mahoney County Educational Service Center is working on a K to 12 grant. I wanna say special thanks to Mr. Beattie and Mrs. Fisk. It's a $34 million grant for Ohio, $35 million grant for Ohio, from the federal money that they're applying for, and it has to be an ESC that's applying for it, so like, we couldn't apply for it individually, but there are 16 schools involved in it with the ESC, and you would think you'd get a little bit of time to work on it, but especially when you're talking about something of that kind of magnitude of money. So everything had to be kinda done in a couple of weeks. So I know that those two have put in a lot of time on the weekend, getting all the information they needed. Mr. Toro, I think, is the one from the middle school that's been working on it, and you had Mr., Mrs. Reyes, and Mrs. Basil helping.
I have Mr. Ponderland, Mrs. Zinger, Ms. Murray, and Ms. DeWolfe.
So not only was it before school or after school, but it was in two days at the county office that they were helping, and we'll see if we get it. It's all literature-based for in-service, basically, for K-12. So, and it's kind of broken up, like it's K2, and then 3, 4, 5, that's two separate, and then 6, 8, and then 9, 12. Is that correct how they're doing the PD? We'll see, but again, it was kinda out there, and we kinda jumped on it. So there's 16 of us that are in the ESC on board with it, so we'll see what happens with it.
All 16?
Would, the money would go...
Like they all did the work the same as?
Well, all individual.
It started as 24 last Friday, and when we met last Friday, it went to 16 by this week. It ended up 67 pages is what our grant.
And the way the process works is that we all had to do a literacy plan and submit it to the county. The county then took all of those, combined it into one, and then they submitted the grant.
Oh, okay.
So in order, basically, there wasn't a district really in our area that would've ever gotten this grant by itself.
Youngstown went on its own.
And I think Warren went on their own.
It's just size facilities, everything else. They're awarding 30 grants from $35 million.
When will we hear?
Supposed to know by April.
Oh, that's fast.
Yeah.
What is that, like per district?
Well, it's not a per district. What would happen is the ESC would be awarded a grant, and they would set up the resources, PD, supplements, everything, to only the districts that apply. And your individual school's grant, like our proposal has to score at least a 60% when it goes through the grant rubric.
And the ESC can only get, the maximum would be 1.2 million, I believe.
Yeah, over three years.
So the ESC will delegate by 16?
Yes, those supplies, like they, we've had to submit numbers of staff, certifications of staff, what current resources we have. So looking at level book, PD, we finished, we submitted it, what time today? 1:34 or something? It was like...
Well, we're pulling for you. Let us know as soon as you...
Our staff was fantastic.
Wonderful.
Yeah, thank you. Thank your staff. Thank you, guys. Thank your staff. Facilities is kinda like, it's gonna be a very broad topic, so we have been checking into stadium lights is basically what I'm trying to get at in facilities, but the, we were waiting for a quote to come back, which that's kind of a no-go, the one we're waiting on.
Yes. Well, we ended up getting, the last meeting was like $500,000 roughly for the lights at the high school, you know, stadium lights.
Yeah. It's ridiculous. And we were all going to have heart attacks, because we don't have that kind of money.
Anyway, the one engineer we, one of them, went back and revamped his numbers. He looked at the wiring up there, the wiring's all good. The thing that blew up.
Transformer.
Transformers were good. It wouldn't be that one. Was that on the grant?
No.
So anyway, they came back, and he said we could put all new, the poles up, the four new poles, in LED for around $250,000. $250,000.
New poles?
New poles. It wouldn't be anywhere, it'd be 70 foot, but he said, "Oh, you need 70."
That includes the cost of the foundation for those poles?
He said, he said $250,000.
Well, what happened to our idea of the bar?
I'm gonna get that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
All right, but he also did say that we could retrofit lights on his existing poles up there, like 125 LEDs, or we could use a traditional light, like kinda like what's up there now, for about $75,000. And then Dave did a lot of work in this, and he down, this other booth electric came back, and we're like, it's just rough, these are on this estimate, it's about $223,000. So we got two comparable estimates with new poles about the same price, so.
Do we need new poles, John?
Well, that's what we have to have discussion.
Is there anything above for $2,500?
But, are you going to go on a row though? That's what she was asking. Oh, there's a third option now. Dave, he's meeting with CLR Electric about just adding us like another row of lights, existing lights up there on the bottom to each pole.
Okay.
And clean the, I guess something happened to one of the heat, causing the lenses to get like brown. I mean, if you ever notice that lighting up there, it is brown, it had a brown tint to it, and it's because of the heat and the lights.
It's like your car.
You get your car yellow there.
Your head there.
So we're gonna get a price of just adding another one, cleaning them up. Why is it gonna be...
Cheaper, right?
...to go, but again, the board's gonna have to discuss whether tonight or have another meeting sometime, and Mitch is here about, who knows what to do.
We actually need a price on...
Yeah, we need prices.
The other one.
The third option.
Yeah.
So that's probably the one that I would think, real quick, we wanna lean toward, but...
Because we have no reason to believe...
Well, the first time they went out, they didn't move the wiring.
Well, the transformer was the issue, but we have no reason to believe that the new transformer's gonna go out. The other one was like, what, 40 years old, right?
If the transformer goes out, that still got nothing to do with the light.
Correct. Well, they won't work if the transformer goes out.
Okay, so if you spend $250,000 and put the brand-new lights up, and the transformer goes out, I don't care if you got new lights or new lights.
It don't matter.
All the issues we have, the old lights and the new lights.
Right.
And the amps out of there because of the, because of the bulbs, because you are, you will be way more energy efficient by putting the LEDs up.
60% more efficient?
Yeah, but you're just gonna take 50 years to pay for it, but if you only have them on five nights, I mean, let's say...
Five nights, ten years.
Not even, 30 burning hours. I mean, I just put on the LEDs in our warehouses all across, all across the state of Ohio, but, and I got grants for it, I mean, I got... We got rebates on it, because we were going to LED, but our lights are on, you know, 8.7.
Yeah, that's what I said, it's, I think the last choice that we're waiting for is probably the one we're gonna look at the most, but again, we need that last price, because if we can just add even one row, get those lights cleaned that are there, and put one more row on each pole.
And the additional row would be LED, right?
I don't think that would work.
It would be same as the existing lights.
Yeah, because I don't think you want one row of LEDs with the other ones, but like those, we're talking about those transformers, you know, they went, the other one went probably like four or five years ago on the home side, then the other one went last year, but they lasted 40 years, so now we have two fairly new, two new transformers. So you would hope that if they last 40 years, I mean, if you're...
And for five football games, 10.
Spend quarter of a million dollars.
No, that's only 70 for five times.
We don't have 10 home games.
That's not the problem.
We don't. We have five home football games a year, six max, sometimes four. So for five games, why would we spend that much money? We don't have that kind of money.
I agree, that's what we need to get the price of cleaning them up and adding a row of lights and go from there.
I'd rather play on Saturday if it's gonna cost that much.
I don't know, that's what we gotta check. I don't know how one row can work with the other ones, that's why I have to look at it, but, I mean, we're gonna have to...
It's too much money.
They're way more. Soon as you, soon as you screw the new bulbs in when you replace them, they start, they start losing their...
It might lose money.
Lumens right away.
But that's, I mean, the field's dark. That's a bigger problem than the lights going out all the time, is the dark field. There's only four lights, they're not that high, you know, so we're not gonna completely solve the problem by adding a row of lights, because the poles are still the same height, that's not changing, you're still only on four poles, right?
The new poles they're talking about would be 10 feet lower.
Really?
10 feet lower.
That's putting the...
10 feet. How tall is this one? That's why we gotta get that.
That's why we have to have the special lift, and it costs so much more money.
Yeah, he said...
It's crazy.
Yeah, he said 70-foot poles, yeah.
So, I mean, if we have to have a special, then we will, but I think what we're looking at isn't like it's gonna take months to get something in, I think, you know?
Well, if we could just go back to how this all this conversation started before, like, you going to the board, they wanted - the prior board decided that's where the field's going to be. I don't know if - this is your call, but are we still...
I'm not on that page. I think I'm the - if I'm the one, it's fine.
We were going to start with the lights, right? We were going to start with the lights, get the lights going, do it the right way. That's how all this conversation started.
I didn't get to school here, so I don't - I mean, if you guys want to keep it, that's fine with me, but...
Well, I think it's the bigger picture, Tom.
I've got a lot of...
It's not about going to school here. It's a bigger picture. We're really three towns.
We have roots here.
We're Nor Jackson, we're Lake Milton, we're Craig Beach.
I'm a higher grad, still being down there, and I graduated from here.
Yeah, I think, I mean, you're right. Every decision we make regarding that field and money has - we have to know if that field's going to be there in 10 years. And I don't think it makes any sense if that field were to be there in 10 years personally.
Yeah, I think we're going to need Mitch, so...
We need a vision on where we want to go.
Yeah.
And we don't really have one, so that's a problem.
We have to establish that vision before we determine any money we're going to spend because we're still going to be in that field in 10 years, and now's the time to make an investment in it.
Right.
If we're not going to be, we need to have some sort of timeframe of what we anticipate with that field.
It's almost how you do forecasts. We almost need to write something today.
Well, it's bigger than just the field. It's facilities.
I was going to say...
It's the whole thing. It's - we've talked about possible gyms and things of that nature, so, I mean, it's the big picture.
I mean, I know you want the vision and everything, but it's still all talking money. And when you start talking about moving a field here, it's not just like...
Now, you're talking about village.
You're talking septic, you're talking...
Right.
You're talking construction bill, you're talking buildings from...
It's seven figures.
Right.
But if you think that field's going to be there for another 10 or 12 years, if that's your thought process, then you shouldn't just put a Band-Aid on a problem. You should fix it more like the $125,000 range, fix it for the next 12 years. Otherwise, six years from now, what are we sitting here having the same conversation and having just burned $50,000 on a Band-Aid?
You're pregnant, have a special meeting, sit down, just like that will be the whole conversation.
Yeah, I agree.
Unless you got things about it in the meantime.
Well, again, this fellow JMA stated that we could - I mean, these are just rough figures, $125,000, you could put the LED lights out there on this existing place. What you just mentioned.
Or you can get Eric on a lift and clean them.
Yeah, they sell it stuff on TV channel.
Shame on us.
Do we have to get Mitch involved?
Well, I just think he's just - I think it's only fair to him because he's - I think he's one of the ones strong that would rather see it stay there, so I think it's only fair to him.
Well, I don't think we can make any decisions today. When are we expecting the next quote to be back?
Days may leave on Tuesday.
Tuesday.
I mean, I don't know if they'll have a quote Tuesday, but it's maybe on Tuesday.
You know, I'll make sure to shoot me on TBI.
Yeah, maybe we can just find a time where it's good for everyone and decide what we do want to do.
I think that lands more thinking, and then that's the only reason that...
You're right, you're right on that. Use that money to...
We've got a lot of things to think about.
Okay. I have educator of the year here and volunteer of the year, so typically, you know, Mitch at last week is cool on graduation night, so I know at one point we talked about doing it differently. I don't know if we're going to get names off principals and board of you. I don't know if you want me to see if like the JMA wants to get involved and help. I don't know.
Is there a policy on this? No, I think we talked about...
I really...
I just don't - my opinion, yeah, I - the answer is yes, I'd rather have their opinion, but then why do I even vote on it? What do I know? I mean, all I know is a name, nine times out of 10.
I really enjoy when we have one in each building. I think it's very commendable, and it makes us feel like a whole. But that's just my opinion, and I definitely think we need the input of our administrators and Dawn and Kirk because they're here every day with our people.
So, I mean, you want to just keep it like we can get nominations from principals and talk about it in the group?
I'm with that, yeah.
Okay. I thought we talked about having the criteria put together for it so that when they say, "Here's my suggestion," and they give me the four names in the row, I can say, "Okay, well, now I understand why they were number one."
It'll break.
Is that just saying? I mean, I'm not saying you don't put thought into it.
No, no.
I'm just saying so that I can understand...
Yeah, right, why? You don't know if you don't work with them, you don't have to tell them every day you want to know.
Yeah, I'm not here... Like, Tom said, he's not here every day. He doesn't know if they're...
I guess that's why I didn't know, even for their protection for more, we need to have something.
Don't - do you guys not do bios?
In writing that we're trying to...
On the teacher, like, when you submit them, you don't do bios?
Read them on?
Not submit them, no, just...
Once we've selected the winners, yes. So, when you guys go and pick a teacher or whatever, there's no like bio, and then you can give to them going, "Okay, this is why I would think this is their quick bio, discrimination form." Yeah, just a quick bio, and then you can glance at it because you don't really know that teacher or something going, "Oh, this is what this teacher has done. This is what they've done for the year," or whatnot, to make them even think that they were an option. And it's just like a couple paragraphs or whatever. I mean, some people have done it huge, so it's like two pages. Kind of what you were asking for, criteria.
And then the volunteer we usually get off of the principals and athletic director and stuff.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Guys, okay with that?
Easter break is March 30th to April 9th. We did talk about searches before, but it was again previous to, I think, being Mr. Campbell being on and stuff, so we've always talked about, you know, we've had the dog searches come in. In the past, we've searched, not actually searched, but had the dog go through the parking lot and stuff. And I think last time we talked about it, we agreed that that's okay to do.
I'm still on board with that. Anybody not on board with that?
National Honor Society Father-Daughter Dinner Dance is the 23rd at 6 o'clock. I think they were up to 108 people.
Oh, good for them.
192 now.
That's amazing. That's craziness.
Well, it's here now, but I'm not sure.
In the cafeteria, we're searching for tables right now.
I mean, that's fantastic. That is unbelievable. And then Mrs. Reyes.
Yeah.
So, they do have a great time that night, though.
Nice.
It's the largest number they've ever had.
Yeah. Foresty Girls Basketball Sectional Tournament starts the 24th for our girls. They play at home starting at 1 o'clock, and we're not sure who they'll play against. So, they'll play the winner of the game. I actually gave you a bracket.
Me, too. I guess Southern Local.
Oh, you gave us the bracket?
I did give you a boys' and girls' bracket there to look at so you can see who's like in our tournament, who are in the... Foresty Wrestling Sectional Tournament starts February 24th, the same day. They did turn that into a one-day event. I don't know if you're kind of familiar with that. It used to be a Friday afternoon and all-day Saturday. Now, it's just all-day Saturday. So, that starts at 10 o'clock at Ridgestown, and then the regionals are the following weekend up at Garfield Heights. And then the top four from Ridgestown, you know, dance to Garfield. The - where'd I get the boys at? I got them later because of the date, I guess. So, NHS Induction Ceremony is March 6th at 6 o'clock here in the cafeteria. High school winner's sports awards assembly is on the 13th at 6:30. Then the boys play - I don't know why I did that down there, but the boys open up tournament play at Springfield Local against Springfield on the 27th at 7 o'clock. Lucas Sokol advanced to the Pee Wee State Wrestling Tournament at Akron Firestone. I believe that's this weekend. Does that sound right?
I think it is.
He fought his way back. He had lost his purse, so he made it all the way back through the Consees to move on. So, tough.
Yeah, so I don't know 100% sure, but I thought it was this weekend, but could be wrong on that. Michaelina Terranova became our all-time leading scorer, so she on the 12th. Congratulations to her. The high school cheerleaders advanced to state competition March 3rd in Columbus, West erville, Ohio, so they're down there practicing. Eighth-grade boys and eighth-grade girls' basketball teams finished third, so they both won the runner-up game. The JM Athletic website reached a milestone. It gets 200,000 hits in a five-month period. And I did have somewhere else that they were 23rd for the month of December. Let me see here. They were 23rd for the month of December in hits out of 2,300 schools. That's a lot. That's a lot of hits out there. Congratulations, and Mr. Hope put that together for us. Blue Jay Elf, I know, I forgot. Blue Jay Elf. I didn't say - I don't know what I do with my write-up. Helped, I believe, 69 students, and they collected over $6,000.
That's wonderful.
You know, that was for Christmas.
Yeah.
So, Mrs. Weary actually hands in all the receipts and everything that was purchased from her, too. That's a lot. I mean, that's a lot, 6,700, I think it was actually. So, I think, like I said, 69 students, got some help from donations.
Nice.
That's awesome. The - we did then honor the Blue Jay 5K. Mr. Rattuno and I met with Abby Fishtorn, who's going to head up the 5K this year. I believe it's May 20th, and she is awesome running with it. She is going to do a couple different things differently. She's going to have like a competitive-type thing, like an Ironman-type competition, and then a regular competition starting time for people that want to take their time and jog and walk it, but she's talking about like digging a mud hole where you got to go and digging a thing where you got to climb over or in a...
A mountain.
Not a mountain.
You don't have to, yeah, you don't have to...
It's like one of those warrior competitions, so...
With a worked wall, I would... And she's already sent things home, which I think is wonderful.
Yeah, she's running it through PTA.
Wonderful.
So, everything runs through PTA. They have insurance, but she's already contacted businesses and lined up donations.
For her, she has Tepsies coming. The Marines are setting up a tent. They're trying to coordinate with the Navy and the Air Force as well. They're going to do like their pull-up contest. She has litter truck and trailer, and has like bounce houses, Pepsi's still need water. She's trying to get porta-johns donated right now, so if anyone...
That would be my husband.
Oh, really? And I didn't even know that. I swear to God, I didn't say that.
So, that would be the Kane Brothers.
Okay.
Their son owns a porta-john company.
Okay, that might be...
So, that would be that right there.
Talking to you, but yeah, I mean, she was just a PTA talking about all the donations, like...
And she's doing like a race for younger kids, like maybe once around the track or something she's talking about, and then, like I said, the 5K, and then the 5K competition.
She's just going to be a fun zone for kids, too, just free for parents to bring kids out with the clouds from the Shiner's and...
I think she'll do a great job. She's very organized. She's a very nice lady.
And she's into it, so...
Those wonderful... You don't know, Abby Fishtorn, she has Otis is in kindergarten, Princess is in first grade. She is the mother. She works away. She coordinated all these supplies to be donated for every kindergartner and first-grader this year.
Yes, okay.
So, when she fights on an idea...
Yeah, she is.
It's Midas.
You'd like her.
Yeah.
Sounds fun.
Yeah.
And I saw there was an incentive. The first 200 people that sign up get a...
A swag bag.
A bag, all of it.
Yeah, they have swag bags. There should be a photographer taking picture. Yeah, she's...
Very nice.
She's cracking, and Mrs. Mendeloff, all the contacts that she originally had, but they kind of already went through them and passed it and doing other stuff, so she's on it, that's for sure, then. I mean, her enthusiasm at the meeting was unbelievable. So, this is 5K. I have a draft agenda for the - or draft in there for the school calendar, probably go on it next month. I do have to meet with JMEA. They're getting the committee together to go over some things. The only thing in there is waiver day, like PD days. So, we might have to approve a calendar and then approve another one before school's out if, obviously, if they get that grant, then we're going to have to coincide some PD days with them. But again, we're on minutes, not actually days, even though contractually we did days with the teachers like we were, but...
Are we on minutes?
We're on minutes.
So, then we'll be okay?
Yeah.
Okay, I thought we were on days.
Well, we had to go to minutes last contract, even though in the contract, we kept it the same for days. We kept it the same for makeup.
Okay, that's good because our hours are long. Our elementary students are significantly longer than other students around, so that'll be helpful for us.
Yeah, when the talk was going to minutes, we actually calculated it out and we couldn't miss that. We could actually not have 19 days of school.
Right, and we'll be okay. Good, I was concerned about that.
But we are making them up this year. We have the 20-day days.
Yeah, it's in there even next year, we would make them up after 5.
So, we're going to make them up even though we don't have to?
Yeah.
The union contract said we had to make the days up.
We can always waive probably the student day, but the teachers would do PD with like the last day of school. Like, we're at 5 right now, so anything after this, we can make up. The teachers would have to make them up.
But the kids don't.
We could - we'll probably get away from OD.
That's very interesting to me.
But that would give us some, like a PD, something to do at the end of the year or two weeks, but check out...
Yeah, okay. Sounds good.
Uh, after school care, you know, I don't, uh, just wanted to throw it on there today, 'cause it's probably a possibility that we're just gonna cancel it. We're getting, we're just losing money.
Really? Not very many kids?
Two kids some days.
Really?
One one day, four one day. It's just...
Oh, is it day by day thing?
Yeah.
Yeah, they don't have to come every day. And, uh, like the other day, we had two kids, so we're losing thirty bucks a day.
And you're faithfully announcing it, sending information out.
And parents that were inquiring about it aren't sending their kids. So, we don't know if it's because we started later, that they've already made arrangements, but, I mean, I had parents that called every day that, hey, are you gonna do this? And we haven't, and they're not coming.
So, you know, when we did that, we weren't, we didn't wanna make money, but we surely didn't wanna lose money. So, you know, it's not, it's hard to justify doing that when we're debt suspending. So, it's just not, uh...
Well, and you were clear with that. It was clear, I mean...
No, I got, I actually got, I made sure I had the attendance here. There's actually right here.
And that's not the case with the before school care, correct?
No.
Like, you're getting a lot more students for the before.
And, I mean, it's only five dollars as opposed to free, so I don't even think it's the fiscal thing, you know?
I think you're on to something when it started, you know, like if it maybe started at the beginning of the year, but it's gonna be going, you know?
That's my only guess.
More than that, but, I mean, when you look at, uh...
Were we off until five-thirty?
Yeah, on the eighth, we only had two kids. On the sixth, we had three. I mean...
Yeah, we just can't do that. That's just not good decision-making.
I mean, yeah. I mean, daycare place usually only open until six anyway, so...
And we have, uh, one, two, we have like five kids that actually their parents signed them up and have never stayed yet one time.
Oh, I didn't, yeah.
I mean, but they signed them up. We can't hold it just for like in case one day, every two weeks, somebody wants to go do something.
So, tomorrow morning, you don't know who's staying?
No, the mornings differ.
No, no, I'm talking like tomorrow morning though, at eight AM. You won't know who's gonna be there after school.
They send a note that day. They, yeah, they, uh, yes.
That's how they do it.
Sometimes they don't, and then, uh, you know, we had a kindergartner, I'm supposed to stay today, and I'm holding buses and we're calling, like, no, we don't have a note. Hold on, you know?
It's just like, you know, like I said, Eric.
Yeah, that's a lot of coordination.
The whole thing was not to make money, but not to lose money.
Yeah, right, yeah. We were...
And, and to be a convenience for our parents. I mean, we wanna try and make it that they can do what they need to do, but, yeah, it's...
Guess they're going okay.
But also, they're picking their kids up, a lot of them at two-thirty over here, so it's easier to wait in the afternoon. If they're making arrangements to be here at two-thirty to pick up their seventh graders, then, you know, it's easy to hang out till three, ten, thirteen.
Yeah, I wish, I need that work scheduled myself.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, I mean, again, we just can't do it like...
No, I know. I mean, I'm a convenience thing when someone wants it once every two... No, I know. I thought it was more like, yeah, like I said, read that details.
Uh, but, I mean, if, if we're gonna cancel, I was gonna be with the principals next week. We would, you know, we'd do a two-week notice or something, so in case they do that. But, I mean, just so you know, in case you hear why we're canceling it, so. Table tennis, just so you know, I don't know if you remember, I don't even know if you're on here. So, uh, the kids approached, Mr. Vega and I, about just doing table tennis once a week after school in the winter months. So, I donated my table, and actually, it's going really well. Kids love it. Um, they do a tournament, a draw, and they play, and then the winner plays Mr., uh, Josh Smith. Um, so I think one kid beat him so far, and he's pretty good. So, anyhow, they're having fun with it. Uh, they don't have, it's just something they stay and have fun. It's not like they have to. Whoever shows up, they do a tournament, and, but it's going well.
It's nice.
So, and he's volunteering his time and saving the kids, so. Uh, the team teaching, uh, well, Mr. Vega already touched on it. It really is impressive. So, uh, they're doing that, and, uh, yeah, just, uh, I don't think, E-Blast went out, uh, what, the other day? Maybe Monday or Tuesday, I think? Well, it went out last Friday. I think that we did a correction on the girls' game Monday, I think. Uh, and then, uh, that's it. That's it for here for the program.
Sounds good.
Just a couple things. Would he mention debt suspending? We don't have debt suspending. And we're, I told you before, we actually got down a little bit for next year, where I told you that figure's going down, so just to clarify that. We're watching it. He's doing a good job. Um, just a couple things on page four. Staff records, commissioning, if you can be here in half hour.
Sure. The next meeting just that, it's six.
The warm neck that we have to get rid of records, and it would be, right, in case, uh, we have a special one, it would just be the record month, you know, next month.
Okay, okay.
Right, it'd be the record month before the regular. That's what that's for. Everybody understand where the tax rates are?
What's that?
The tax rates.
Fifty-one?
You're on page five item now, the resolution accepting the tax rates. Those come from the county auditor in Ralph's office. And those rates are what determines what local taxpayers and businesses pay for tax rates, the effective rates.
Our total was like forty-six, right? Or forty-seven?
Well, there's, there's inside village and there's affective situation. Yeah, it's...
No, I read it, just 'cause it's actually a positive thing. I, I was just...
The taxes and for school rate, we actually have one of the lowest.
Yeah, that's why, that's why I'm writing all the... So, the TV man can hear that?
So, it's just protocol to board. Every year, at the same time, we approve the rates. It's kinda like approval day, approval day. And, um, on, on item I, we're, we're gonna buy one new bus after July. That was actually...
And that was kind of a surprise.
Yeah.
'Cause usually, we get a little bit more of a notice that we need a new bus. I don't remember hearing, I know it's been several years since we've bought a new bus.
Yeah.
Probably almost four.
You actually put her off last year, I think, if they were gonna buy one. And you got, but we kinda like...
Yeah. It was kind of a surprise when I saw that.
Try to stay ahead of...
I didn't know if it was for her. I was gonna ask too. I thought maybe something happened.
Well, maybe it's a retreat you're taking on that afternoon.
I don't remember it even being brought up that we needed a new bus.
No, I mean, she had, I mean, we've had, Jones had a budget, I think, in the forecast for one.
Yeah, we were showing, you know, each year, almost like one, two of them, but we've been taking them.
We, I mean, we could have one of them come next month. I mean, this is on here?
Oh, no, that's...
This is just a go-through.
I'm not questioning the fact that we need one. I just, it just came up all of the...
No, I'm good. I just...
I'm sure there's wear and tear.
We didn't go over in the retreat, the year prior, we went over exactly how many buses we have, what year they were. We didn't do that this year.
Yeah, it was just like a surprise when I saw it. A new bus? That's a lot of money.
He was trying to slide it by.
Yeah, I think so. And I hear the bus drivers are all sick.
Your story out.
That's terrible.
We just got one back, so there's two out.
How are we managing with all of that?
Everything's moving right. We got our sub back too. If you were short of sub, too, I think.
Really? I mean, the one day, we got the call very early that...
I know, but I was gonna think it's a snow day. I...
I know, I was like, what?
But, but they ended up not coming.
Yeah, it ended up pretty good time. But I'd rather have parents be prepared for that than waiting outside.
I've been taking one up at a time on my motorcycle.
There you go.
Are we good, John?
Well, anyway, getting back to that real quick, we joined the Ohio Schools Council, and they do all the required getting for us now. So, it's very nice. We don't have to go out on our own and go through all that advertising and rejection of it, whatever they get for your work. So, just a couple more things. On, like, on page seven, you see like a, uh, the safety meeting on like number nine there. This is a, this isn't a cost thing, but we're in what's called a retro program for our workers' comp, 'cause we had a bad plan six years ago, I'm still in it. So, we have to go, there's required two-year or two-hour training every year. You probably know about that.
I know.
You go. So, we just, we just go, just satisfied by that requirement. That's why it's on there.
Keep your rate down.
And, um, and one more thing, House Bill nine, on last month's agenda, every, every four years, I have to represent a board member, one year, one year of their four terms, to go to public records training. So, we're, call last month was on the agenda, designated person. So, I think I got you covered for that. You don't have to worry about it.
Just say thank you. You don't wanna go.
You will. That's all I have. That's all.
Okay, so... Legislative report.
Okay. Actually, when I, since this is my first legislative report, I got, I guess, I kinda took it after this, since you gave this to us. I mean, there's different, different things in the OSBA that they look at, like governors and student achievement, et cetera. But really, I mean, I just had a couple things that I looked at that I'm not by any means an expert on, so I just thought I'd bring it up so everybody's kind of aware of them that I fills in and quarter. One was the E-COAT thing, which I emailed Kirk, but we didn't, I guess, one student that was in E-COAT, and they're not coming here. So, I just didn't know how many there was, if we were gonna expect maybe getting several, but...
I know, there's all that talk. We only had one student, and they went to a virtual academy. Yeah, I mean, one E-COAT in elementary.
The other three House Bills kinda correlated together. One, House Bill three forty-three, which is the one that requires a school board to pass a resolution approving the complaint or account at a public meeting before filing a property tax complaint. So, what that means is if we felt that maybe there was a business or something that wasn't, we were arguing their tax rate, that we have to actually, that bill was passed, basically, I mean, we need to bring it to the public's attention. So, it could be, it could kinda be like a political thing or whatever.
Is that the one that's in, made it rigor and certified mail and all that out, I think?
Yeah, it's, we're involved in a couple. We're fighting a couple of those right now.
Obviously, the OSBA is opposed to this House Bill.
You want more transparency with all that process.
And then, the House Bill thirty-one, three seventy-one's the same. Um, it would basically exempt from property tax increased value of unimproved land that have been subdivided for residential development until the construction begins, or the land is sold. I don't know how much that's really gonna affect us out here, but that's kinda part of all that. And then, House Bill three forty-two, which they're trying to eliminate the August special election for in local taxes. So, I don't know if that really would affect us or not. I mean, I guess if you weren't planning ahead, it could.
It's not, it's not gonna affect us unless you wanted to put the issue on the ballot. That's not happening.
Some people are trying to put them on, others, you know? It hasn't treated us very well, I hear them now.
And this is just a question that I have. House Bill four ten, which was the truancy by hours? Do we, how do we track that?
Uh, this, sorry.
No, they, um...
My...
The county has actually provided us with some tracking ability through, um, our EMIS coordinator, our EMIS sites, and we were able to run reports on a monthly basis that show how many hours the kids have missed. And, um, we've also, as we mentioned in another board meeting, we've begun working with Judge Delik's office for some early warning system, um, opportunities where if you start seeing a kid that's in, you feel like it's in jeopardy, then we, we kind of, we send a letter, Officer Cessnowski or Officer Jamie, phone call, and then we actually have a representative from Judge Delik's office come in and meet with the kid. You know, there are some steps involved, because with, with that bill, they pushed back onto the schools, the responsibility of creating a team that would work on the truancy. And, and it's, the hour situation is very difficult to keep track of, but EMIS has provided us with some tools to do that.
Well, my, I figured pretty simple to track, not here.
Yeah, but you're signing in and out.
Tracking in and out, how many hours you were here and not here, I figured.
Yeah, but just another crazy...
I didn't know if we had software, you were doing it on Excel.
Cindy, well, and Tony over here, I believe, is in there yours. I mean, she, you know, signs in, signs out, the signs are in there, and then EMIS can report by the hours. Um, so you can be like cafe, spused, partial, spused, hours, so you, like, it's a lot more on, unfortunately, our cafeteria staff, so, to be able to, to be going.
An interesting bill I thought was House Bill ninety-eight, which basically said it included skilled trades and institutions of higher education, the opportunity to present information to students, and not allow the board to prohibit those presentations. I was sure that, reading more and more into it, it was more like, okay, they have college, you know, you have career day or whatever. I guess if they didn't include skilled trades in that, then I guess some schools were prohibiting that from coming into their school. I don't know why you would do that in this day and age, but I just, I figured we probably weren't prohibiting anybody from coming and presenting to our students, so we just thought that was a pretty, I guess, something that's, but, I think it's good for me, 'cause I'm in the skilled trade, so. And I, you know, I've worked with our, you know, it's council here. I've got four graduates working for, you know, my company, and three of them just graduated, you know, or two of them just graduated last year and have already went through our four apprenticeships. We, you know, they're, they're gonna be probably making more money this year than probably coming out of a four-year college that with debt they don't have, they're gonna go well.
That's good.
I thought that, I thought that was pretty interesting for me. But, uh, the last one I have, kinda is the same thing. The, I think I have the right bill. House Bill fifty-eight, Ohio Means Jobs Ready to Seal? I don't know. Are we doing that? I mean, so will somebody, I mean, like, I think it starts this year, maybe? Will somebody have on their final transcript or report card or whatever it is, or their diploma, that seal, showing that they've, they're ready for the workforce?
More than likely, that student would be at the career center, but would be our student. Um, and it goes along the lines of, of the, the alternative graduation requirements, in which they're doing work keys, they're getting industry credentials, those type of things, so they...
Right, so there's a whole, there's a whole application, I guess you would call it, of, I didn't, I didn't take it that you had to be in the, uh...
No, you don't. No, you don't.
You do that, so...
I can't say a hundred percent we're gonna have somebody with that, but if they are, they're more than likely going to be at our career center.
I, so, but I guess my first, I would try to push that.
Oh, we're, believe me, we've, we've looked at a lot of different options.
We had that conversation last night. We're pushing, we're pushing all these kids that come out of school, go to college, and, you know, go get eighty thousand dollars in debt and come out and make twelve bucks an hour. You know, if you can't get a job in your field, I'm not saying that happens to everybody, but, I mean, it's, it's happening out there. When the trades are just dying. So, we can push a Ohio Means Job Ready to Seal, and they come out and they can get, get some employment, and they're not, they don't wanna go to college or...
Well, but those students go to the vocational school, so then...
Not necessarily. We do, we do have some students that fall in the lines of alternative graduation requirements to even go here. Um, it's such a new thing that we've begun working on some of that process. And I will tell you, one of the things that Mrs. Weary is very good at is, is fitting a kid with what they're going to graduate with. Um, she's not one that would, that would ever push a student into what, like you said, a, a college-level degree where they're going to be eighty thousand dollars in debt, if there's another option for that student. She lays a lot of that on the line for them, and, you know, one of those is the, the work, the work keys or the Ohio Means Jobs Seals.
I mean, I don't know, you know, what that means to anybody out there right now. What do they have to do to get that seal? Is there a requirement that we have to provide or you are on our own?
It would be, it would be in conjunction with what we do, and it would also be in conjunction with, um, if there's a work key test, that would still, again, like I said, right now, if anyone in our district is going to take advantage of that, they're more than likely, that doesn't mean in the future, that wouldn't be something that would be hit that much.
Look like if you like had a job, I mean, you could, like, you gotta have a mentor, I guess, sign off on it, and, or whatever they, maybe they call a mentor. But, I didn't take it that you had to be at, you know, at the technical school. You could be, you could graduate normal, not have any...
No, you would just have, you would just have a graduation plan.
You have work with experience, and then you have your mentor that signs off that you have all these skills, and you've shown them that you have these skills, and you've gotta have three signatures on it. And if you have that full application, and you can put that on there, then you'll get that ready to seal. I guess my question really is, is are we pushing that? And are we seeing individuals halt out after somebody graduates? I know it's fairly new, but is it really meaning anything? That's my, is my question.
I think it's too early to really determine whether or not it's, it means anything yet.
Because, but the importance to me, the, you know, or to any business owner who's right now trying to find labor.
Oh, we're, yeah, we're...
I mean, it's a hot ball. I mean, if they, if you hold them here and they, falls up, you're like, you're hired, you know, and you can pass the drug test.
Drug test.
Sometimes, maybe you throw that out to them, you know? It's like, well, what drug is it? Let's see.
That's terrible. That's terrible.
Mrs. Weary does that too.
Oh, my word.
Mrs. Weary does that too.
I mean, it is. I mean, it's a reality.
But like, when you say someone has to sign, you know, that's where you have to come in and apply the career sign up, because you...
Not necessarily, no. It's, there's a process involved, and it is a new thing that, that's out there. It's, it's one of the, the options that's being explored. But, like I said, I think it's too soon to really see if there has been a benefit to it, and I couldn't tell you right now, anyone that we have right now, that would have that.
I was gonna say, I'm imagining like if it was here, maybe not this year, but next year, like the STEM program and that.
Could be, if possible.
Like the business...
I think, I think there's an internship involved with it, um, or at least a business connection involved.
You have to, you have to have work experience, and that person, you gotta, they gotta check off on all the different skills you have, but it wasn't even like out of this world. Showing up on eyes and having verbal communication skill. I thought it was really good to look at, so I, maybe I'll print it and bring it back to me or something. Other than that, so I got...
You know, you brought up like the STEM, uh, we did have Mr. Struck and another gentleman here. I forget, I don't remember who it was. They came and, uh, they had a banner made. I'm looking at Mr. Struck, one more gentleman. So, they had a banner made for seventieth anniversary for the VFW or something, right? But anyhow, they were here for like two hours, uh, getting a demonstration from like seven-thirty to nine-thirty. Very impressed. I mean, he said he's gonna go back and tell all his people about it, and, uh, the other guy was just amazed that they had that business going inside the building. He didn't know it, and he lives here too. But, um, Mr. Moore and the kids did a great job of that. I mean, just, they actually made the banner while he was here, so it was nice.
I, uh, just to speak on that, I got a call the other day in the office, and it's an outside number. I'm like, hello, this is Miss Fish. Hi, Miss Fish, this is Devon Kristoff coming, calling from Fish School Graphics. And I almost chuckled. I mean, he was a professional. He went through his pitch, and I'm like, Devon? That's one of your kids. And I'm like, he just impressed me so much. And it was like, you know, hi, this is Devon Kristoff from Fish School Graphics. I'm like, Devon? You know, so, I mean, they are really doing a tremendous job, and, I mean, I think both schools taking advantage of it as well as the outside businesses. They're doing a project for us now.
Yeah, and then they did the search for...
Yeah, they did for a tournament.
And the Mesa County, they really did.
The kids did a good job in all, all aspects of the business.
So, are we ready for roundtable? Do you have anything today, Mr. Campbell?
Nothing specific, I guess. I would just, I think, uh, we have, I think there's need for follow-up on the discussion we had with the athletic director last month. And I don't know if that's on task for next month, or if there's, I mean, I think there's a lot more to discuss there, probably a lot more for us to listen to as far as your suggestions on it.
That's exactly what I, you know, it's personal, it's personal.
Yep.
That was all I was thinking about.
Okay. Mr. Jones?
I had the same thought, and I do have one more that goes back to our, uh, January meeting when we had the gentleman from, uh, OSBA, here. And we were talking about the school board mission and the vision, and I didn't really want that to go away, or at least the conversation about it.
I did get some from some other schools, so I guess we just need to, you know, are we gonna do that like a, we wanna meet before, we wanna do it during? I mean, that's what we gotta figure out. We could do, if we're abs, well, I don't know that we need a special.
Well, we're gonna need a meeting to decide what we're gonna do about the field and the lights and, and those sort of things. Can it be combined with that?
Was it that?
Does that need a special meeting? Or we just...[1774.82]
No, it's just whether you want to do it like before meeting, after, I mean, you've got to, it's still part of the board meeting, it's just-
We need to plug in the time. We're talking group, the power to do it after the meeting.
I think we got to put a plan together for it, because I don't, I personally don't, wouldn't want to put together a mission or a vision for our school district without feedback from the people that have buy-in to it. So if there's a vision that we have, I mean, I'd like it to be, I'd like it to be kind of part of it. I don't know if you know what we're talking about or not, but most, a lot of school boards have a mission of that's what they're here for, and they, you know, part of their marching orders, I guess you'd say. So we don't have one. So we thought, we all thought it was a good idea to develop one. So it's just a matter of how we develop it, who do we get involved.
You hit on a key point. Try to get community stakeholders and just get conversation and so that, anytime you can get that buy-in and have a conversation, it's a nice trickle-down effect from here to the building, to community.
I don't know if we can put out, I hate to say letter. Something, you know, just asking for feedback, and here's what our, you know, our thought process is. We want to be, you know, we want to help out.
I mean, do you want me to add it to my part next month? Can we just talk about how we want to go about doing it?
And then we're putting it off a whole nother month if we do that.
Well, it's hard to get feedback. We're going to have a tough time with five of us.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. Is it a school mission statement? It's almost a school board vision statement. If it's a school board vision statement, that's us. If it's a school mission statement, that's community.
It's school.
So, but I was under the impression during his presentation that it was more of a vision of the school board. What is our five's vision of our responsibility to, that's kind of the way I took it. I don't know. I'm not going to exclude the community, but I think, like Tom said, the more people you get involved, the harder it is going to be to put something on paper like that.
I think it, I thought that one was ours, but then they should know, and then we could work from there to get a community, a school.
It needs to be changed. I mean, you can change them each fourth or each year. But you just need to, I mean, I think you can do it either way, but if you wanted to be a board member, then it'd just be us plugging in the time in a board meeting to work on it.
So, talk about it next month. I just thought it was a good idea, and I didn't want to get all the way.
Do we want that to be the goal? That sounds like a good goal to have. No, serious. Have it done by, like, July.
I'll say August versus like the new school year, so.
Put it on a website, maybe go over there.
So, Mr. Huff, roundtable?
Working with OUPS down here at their new building, I did want to pass on how impressed they were dealing with Mr. Baker, Mr. Rotun. I'm not sure they talked to either the principals. I know Tom specifically named both of you.
I think it was just Mr. Rotun.
So he, he was impressed. He's talked about the STEM program extensively. They're the new building down here at the corner of Bailey Road and Two Twenty Four. That's a-
You mean Forty Five. Mahoning.
Mahoning and Bill.
Mahoning and Bill. You said Two Twenty Four, so I was getting confused.
I'm farther north.
Right.
So they're the call center for the whole state of Ohio, the eight-one-one. If someone's digging underground, they have to call. That's where your call goes now, is up there in that building. But they had some other old monitors that they weren't going to use in the new building, so they offered to donate them here. So they brought those two weeks ago or so.
Is there something we can use?
Tom, Tom's the head of their IT department, and he was very impressed. Mr. Rotun and Mr. Baker showed him the STEM Fishbowl there, and he even said they may use, may use them here for some of their printing, because they do all kinds of literature, you know, shirts or pens or cups. I mean, I've got all kinds of stuff from them, so maybe a future customer. He told me also, any like future technology stuff they might not need, he'll probably end up calling you guys to see if you have any use for them. Yeah, it's very nice. Very nice, very helpful. So I just want to say, pass that on. Good experience here.
That's great.
That's all I have.
Okay. John and I and Todd attended the county board meeting. There were a lot of people there. I'm not sure what their feedback was from the meeting. We really haven't talked extensively about that. But we did speak with the Western Reserve School Board, and they were to send some information our way. I'm not sure if that's arrived. Did you get that, Mr. Baker? Did they send that to you?
No.
Okay, they didn't. I'll have to recontact them about their drug policy. I know we spoke about that several years ago, and they were going to send that to the school. So you haven't gotten that since that meeting. I'll follow up with them on that.
Okay. I mean, I can just go over to the superintendent.
Yeah, because he had said that they were going to send it our way.
Okay. I'll call him.
You talked to-
Yeah, I talked to the board, several of the board members and the superintendent, and they were going to send that packet to our school. Because they implemented it just a few years ago, just a random drug testing for students. And the main speaker was about drugs. It was a little different message than I thought it was going to be. I thought it was going to be something that we could take back and use in our buildings. It was more statistics and data, which was overwhelming with the amount of usages of different types of drugs. So it was a little different information than I was hoping for, but that is why, I think that's why the three of us attended, because we had spoken about that. So I just wanted to mention, we did go to that. Several of us also went to the North Jackson Citizen Association Dinner. I believe it was Kirk, Mitch and I attended that night. And that's always very nice. The dinner was extremely long. It had everyone in the community come and present, which was very informational, I must say. If you've not ever gone to one, I encourage you to go, because it's very, very interesting. And I think you could get a picture of North Jackson by attending that. A lot of the people that do go are, you know, a different generation than we are, but they have our history. So I think there's valuables down with that group. And I always enjoy them. I think they're a great group of people. One thing I didn't see on here at all was the music, the music department. Our music department competed the first Saturday in February. And my mind is not placing the letters. It's like, it's not NEOEA or, it's something, because as you hear, I'm a little bit cloudy today. But I don't see that on any of this information. And we had, we had five high schoolers attend. Jacob Klein went as a saxophone solo, and he received state ranking of one, which is the best you can get. Gia is a sophomore, and forgive me for not knowing your last name, Gia.
It's our queen.
Okay, there you go. I just call her Gia. And she did a clarin, no, she did an oboe solo, not clarinet, and she also received a one. Charlotte Leggett did a vocal solo, and she got a two. My daughter Glory did one and got a one. And Leona Stout also competed and received a two vocally. I'm kind of sad that it wasn't here, and I'm equally as sad that it wasn't on the sign. And I, I'm not sure if that's because that wasn't like written down by someone.
Yeah, just was something that we missed, but we'll make sure we reflect that.
And in addition to that, Mr. Baker, if you wouldn't mind acknowledging the high school cheerleaders. I had some upset parents because they weren't announced even on the announcements, and I don't know how that works if, if the coach has to like write an announcement or something.
A lot of times I do, what I, what I base a lot of my announcements are what I get from them. But that is something that I do have on this, this week's.
Okay.
It's just I didn't give it the time to broadcast. I normally, this broadcast.
Yeah, and I know you would never miss a student. Please understand, I, I know you.
I would never miss a cheerleader, trust me.
Yeah, they're a hard-working group of girls.
It was one of them.
Yeah. And I'm very proud of them, to get that state. And I don't think we've ever had that in our school.
No, it's the first time.
So I'm very proud of them. I think that's amazing. And then everything else was executive for me. So.
You mentioned signing out front.
Yeah.
Those like red line. Drew, we'll get that, send a warranty to get that.
Yeah, you know what it's like at the end, but I thought maybe the ladies did that like for our attention.
There's something going on inside, so we'll get, send a five-minute warranty to go outside in case you guys notice that, because we are on it, so.
Good. Anything else, roundtable, or can we go on to public presentation?
Thank you.
Anyone have anything for public presentation today?
I would like to say thank you, Mr. Baker. Your correction that you sent out on the, it's called the black, you know, what I noticed of. My suggestion was to let the parents know that the survey results were read and discussion, just so they know they're not taking those surveys for nothing. So I thought that was nice of you to acknowledge that. I also had an issue, like a safety issue with junior high basketball, and that was addressed, and the rest of the season went very well. So I just wanted to thank you, the board and the leadership group, for kind of listening to the people and taking a step to address that. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. We can go on to letter L, adoption of consent calendar? Or can we, can we adopt it and vote?
We can, if we wanted to do something.
Oh, we can like add it back.
Yeah.
Get rid of the calendar now.
Okay, so option, consent calendar.
Second.
Second. Motion by Mr. Jones, second by Mr. Huff. Mrs. Pittman?
Yes.